Okay, we are recording. Pastor Mark, would you mind opening us in prayer tonight?
Sure thing. I would be, I'd be happy to.
That'd be great.
It's good to see all of you. Thank you for joining us. Let's turn to God in prayer and put this on His hands. Father God, we do thank you for the chance for us to meet. We thank you, God, for what you have in store in and through Good Shepherd. Thank you for all the individuals that are here, for their hearts, for their generosity, for their gifts and their personalities and everything they bring to our great congregation. Thank you for Tom and Ryan who've put a lot of work into finalizing the budget. Thank you for all the voices and the thoughts and the ideas that have gone into this. And God, we want to really put this into your hands. We ask that you would guide us, that you would confirm your will, that you would allow this to really bear fruit for your kingdom. And so I pray to give us clarity and insight and you would fill our hearts with vision for the future for what you have in store. So we thank you for this night and we pray for your continued blessing in Jesus' name. Amen.
Well, I am going to kick us off initially here. For those of you that don't know me, my name is Ryan Philo. I currently serve in, have the honor of serving as our CFO. This is my sixth year on council and final couple of months left as I'm finishing up two terms. So I have had the opportunity to serve as CFO for three years, not necessarily consecutive, but Tom and I have spent a lot of, a lot of time working together on budgets. I wanted to start, one of the most challenging things we have to do when planning a budget for a church is projecting where our revenue line is going to be. It's always a challenge. We never know. And this year was unusually challenging in the fact that we were dealing with some very, very unusual circumstances, circumstances that really none of us had ever experienced. And I wanted to start by helping you kind of at least understand or see kind of how things have been flowed this year from a giving perspective. You'll notice in that second column at the very top, we had projected last year, we had budgeted for giving to be at 3.3 million. Tom and I spent some time and we broke down this year's giving by quarter because it kind of painted a very, very different picture. In the first quarter of our fiscal year, so that'd be July, August, September, our giving came in about 8.2% below what we had projected, or I'm sorry, below last year's giving. And you know, if we think about the first quarter, the first quarter was pre-COVID for the most part. You know, the last maybe two weeks or two or three weeks of March, we started to see some of the COVID impacts and things starting to shut down. But January, February, and at least the first week or two of March were fairly normal from our perspective. And so we finished the quarter with giving down 8%. The second quarter got really interesting and that's where we saw a pretty big hit. That's where COVID really started to impact things. So October, November, December, and we ended up finishing those three months with our giving 20.3% below last year's giving of those three months. So that was pretty eye-opening to see a pretty dramatic shift in kind of giving trends. I think a lot of that had to do with people, a lot of uncertainty economically and in people's own personal budgets, a little bit of fear. And so we did see a pretty steep drop in giving. What we really celebrate though, was the third quarter, which was January, February, March, and our giving rebounded pretty dramatically. And our giving actually finished that quarter 13% above the previous year. So you know, a small deficit in the first quarter, a huge deficit in the second quarter, and then a huge recovery in the third quarter. And so that makes projecting next year's revenue line even more challenging when, when things have been that large of a disparity. That's the context. Then I'm going to explain a few things. Let me orient everybody to what we're looking at on the screen. There are four columns. The first column being last year's actuals from the previous fiscal year. The second column is what we budgeted a year ago for this current fiscal year that we are coming to the tail end of. The third column is our forecast of where we think we are going to finish this year by the end of June. And that, that third column is a combination of actuals through, Tom, was it through January or did we get February's actuals in there?
We got February's in there.
So, so this was July through February and then an additional work on all of our directors' part and Tom's part and my part to forecast the last few months of the year to give us an idea of where we think we are going to finish the fiscal year at the end of June. And then the last column here is the 2021, 2022 proposed budget that we will be voting on at the council meeting coming up. So that's our context. That's the framework of what we're looking at. And I just want to share a few things. First, if you look at our budget of 3.3 and our forecast of just over three, we are showing that we are projecting a shortfall in terms of our, our giving. When we looked at things back in December and we were, you know, 20% below last year's giving, we were a little concerned because the number was pretty steep. But fortunately, as I mentioned, that first quarter giving picked up dramatically. We think part of that was people started to settle in with COVID, the whole situation and getting used to it and you know, the fear started to come down a little bit. We also spent quite a bit of time communicating about generosity and giving. And we do think that that messaging that took place throughout a number of places had it had an impact on our giving as well. We think that had a big part of why we saw a pretty large pickup in, in giving in the first, first quarter of this calendar year. So we did finish down a little bit. What I'd like to also point out is a number of things really helped us close the gap. First of all, our benevolence is 10% of all of our giving that comes in. And so if giving comes in lighter, our benevolence is a little bit lighter. And so that 10% helps to offset that. Our salaries and benefits came in a couple hundred thousand below what we had budgeted. Part of that was open positions and a number of, a number of reasons, but that was a couple hundred thousand that made up a big portion of the difference. And another really big one was our property and maintenance expenses. If you think about it, our building was closed for a long, long period of time. Our cleaning expenses, our utility bills were lower, our, you know, a number of things that are caused by using our building were down quite a bit as well. Between all those things, if you look at that second gray line from the top, the second shaded line, cash flow before ministries. Thanks, Tom. We had budgeted, we were going to have about $318,000. We came in at 288. Well, considering our giving was, was short about 300,000, we were only short about 28,000 because of the fact that we made up for a lot of those differences throughout the year. The next thing that made a huge difference was the fact that our directors did a phenomenal job, really being good stewards of the resources that we had provided to them. And yeah, you knew where I was going, Tom. If you could scroll down. If we look at our cost of ministry, which is that very bottom line, we had projected our cost of ministry throughout all of our different ministries to be about $100,000. Well, our actuals came in at about 51,000. So again, that made up another 50, close to $50,000 of closing the gap, even though our revenues were a little bit light. Tom, if you could scroll down to the very bottom here.
Yeah, let me just, can I just say a word about that, that last quickly? So one of the, one of the great things about my job that I get to do during budget season, so February, March, early April-ish is I get to spend time, a couple hours at least with each of our directors, literally every single one of our directors to go through their ministry budgets. They do all the legwork on their ministries. We don't tell them what they can and can't spend. We ask them to put together their own budget and then make a presentation based on what they want to do for the year. And so, and I, that's one of the best parts of my job is getting to sit down with them and getting to hear that and hear what their plans are for the year. When we go over their budget for what they're proposing for the upcoming year, we also spend time going through the forecast. And you know, Ryan just made the point that when you sum up our total ministry costs that we're projecting for this current fiscal year, as he pointed out, we're gonna, we're predicting that the cost of total ministry is going to be 50,000 less than what we originally budgeted for. Now that could send up a warning flag and say, oh, there must be something wrong. Did somebody tell them that they can't spend that money? Or did they come up with that on their own? The bottom line is no, ministry did not suffer and will not suffer this year or next because anybody made any budget cuts. That is a specific question that I ask every single director. When they come in and they say, yeah, I think we're, the reality is we're going to spend a little bit less than what we budgeted, I ask them point blank. Did you cut out any ministry because you thought you couldn't spend the money? And I can tell you unequivocally, this year, as it has been in years past, that answer was no. Nobody cut any ministry because they probably couldn't spend the money. This is just them being good stewardship. And frankly, this year it's a reflection of us not being able to do some things that they would have liked to have done because of COVID. But it's not because there was a message to not spend money. So that's always important. I want you to know that ministry is not, not suffering or not happening because of any budgetary constraints that we put on it.
Thanks, Tom.
Sure.
If we continue down into that third column, there's one other thing I want to point out. This past year with interest rates at very, very low levels historically, we took advantage of that and we were able to refinance our two mortgages that we have. And we were able to reduce those interest rates significantly. I'm sure a lot of you, if you have mortgages, did the same thing this past year when interest rates were down, take advantage of that opportunity. And that's exactly what we did. You'll notice that line that says loan principal. We are projecting to pay off $207,000 worth of our debt. We paid off almost 320,000 and that was because during that process, it was beneficial for us to take a little bit of our cash reserves and pay down our, our debt to get to certain levels and ratios to get the best opportunity in terms of interest rates. That 100 and I believe is 111,000, 112,000 also shows up down on the bottom line under where it says transfer from reserves. So those were kind of two offsetting things. Effectively what we did is we took 120,000 out of our cash reserves, which we have a pretty reasonably healthy balance and use that to pay down our debt. So that was one thing that, that took place. The most important thing I want to point out is if you look at the bottom of column two, we are projecting a year ago that we would have about $10,000 of positive cash flow. At all things being equal, we were going to have about 10,000 more at the beginning of the year. We are now projected to have about 20,000. So even during the challenges of, of the coronavirus that we've experienced efficiently and very effectively, and we are still looking at, you know, positive cash flow for our congregation. I'll take a quick stop there before I jump into the next phase is going to be talking about next year's budget. But any, any questions that anybody's got about the current fiscal year that we're wrapping up? Okay, well, let's move on. Tom, if, let's, let's jump back up to the top line again. So again, as I, as I mentioned earlier, the hardest thing we have to do during budget process is forecast or predict where we think giving will, will end up. And we as council had lots of conversations everywhere from 3 million, which is kind of where we're forecast to finish the year and say, hey, let's assume zero growth whatsoever. We had conversations about three and a half, and I think our top number that we ever even had a conversation about was 3.6. We can't, we settled on 3.2. We feel like with the upswing that we have seen in the latter half of this fiscal year, we do think if that continues and we're going to work very hard at it, God has blessed us in so many ways and we've been faithful and we expect that God will continue to do amazing things through Good Shepherd over the next fiscal year. We think 3.2 is a pretty safe number, especially with the trend we've seen in the last few months. If anything, I personally think it could potentially be on the conservative side. So that's our, that's our, our top line number. You'll also notice a second line underneath that, which is our other income line. And you'll notice last year or this current year, we're forecasting $12,000. That's rough, you know, that, that's from dividends, interest, things like that on our cash accounts and a number of different things. Our forecast or our budget that we're proposing for next year shows a much larger number. We had a PPP loan that Good Shepherd applied for back in April, right at the beginning of the pandemic. The PPP loan was, the purpose of it was to basically maintain our level of staff, which we did throughout that, that process. And you know, at the point of time where we had to apply, there was huge question marks about the economy, giving all these different things. So we did accept that, that loan. That loan is a forgivable loan if we meet certain terms and we are very, very confident, although it hasn't been declared yet. As the loan being forgiven, we are very, very confident that we meet all of the terms to do so. And so we have a chunk of money that is going to be deemed as income, most likely at the beginning of next year. We'll talk about what our plans are for that money as, as we go through. You know, we as council kind of talked about lots of options. And we really kind of settled on wanting to give some, use some, and save some. So we are tithing just like we do on all of our other revenue. So of that roughly 400,000, 40,000 is adding to our benevolence. You'll see our benevolence line is significantly higher than years past because of that. So we are using it to continue supporting other ministries, just like we do with our other resources that we have as, as a, as a tithing church. We'll talk about where the other comes into play in, in just a minute. So again, with those funds, we are forecasting or budgeting for next year with a larger operating amount, a larger operating, net operating and a larger cash flow before our ministries. This year, we're going to come in just most likely here under 300. We think we'll come in closer to 550 because of that one-time amount of money that is coming in. Again, I won't go through every single ministry, but just be confident that Tom has worked extremely hard with each and every director to, to look at every single line of every single ministry budget. And we are projecting that our ministry cost, even though we were at 51,000 this year, is going to be 98, but well below, or not well below, but slightly below what we budgeted last year of over 100 and below what we spent the previous fiscal year, which was 105. You'll see at the very bottom line, we are showing a net cash flow or a net positive cash flow of 369 bucks. That's our goal. You know, our goal is to spend money on ministry, grow, grow the kingdom of God and use the resources we have. And that's kind of where we, what we targeted. You'll also notice a couple of lines above that, a transfer to capital reserve of 237,000. That amount is, you know, is the amount that we are kind of saving for the future of our PPP funds. So again, I mentioned earlier that our goal was to give some, spend some, and save some. That 237 is the amount we are looking to save for future use. It may be ministry, it may be a number of things, but we are looking to set some, some money aside for future use. This brings to the, the topic of if we didn't have the PPP loan, we would have a deficit. We would have a deficit of about 270, about 120,000, 125,000. And so we are using the PPP funds for their intended purpose, which was to maintain staffing. The reality is, if you look at our budget, the largest portion of our budget is salaries and benefits. If we were showing $120,000 shortfall, we would have, the only way we would have really closed that gap completely would have been to address our salaries and benefits. And that would have involved laying people off, cutting benefits for our staff, all things that we really, in the interest of maintaining ministry through Good Shepherd, we really wanted to avoid doing. So again, we are using a small portion of the PPP funds to maintain our staffing level and which was the intended purpose of PPP from the beginning. The government stated purpose was to use this money to support salaries and maintain staffing, which is exactly what we did and why we're using a portion of that money for that purpose. I think that's all I wanted to at least start with initially. Tom, I don't know if you have any additional comments you want to add or any color commentary that you would like to add. Tom's, Tom's the one that has spent the most time on our budget. So he knows it even better than I do.
Yeah, there's nothing I would add. He did a great job, Ryan. I think he covered all the points, but certainly happy to answer any questions that people have.
Perfect. So let's open up to any questions that people do have on the, the proposed budget for next year.
Ryan, this is Kirk Crawford. Could I just ask a couple, I think, quick questions?
Sure.
Clarifying one, you mentioned on the PPE loan that it would come next year. Were you talking about next year budget-wise or are you talking about, we're not going to see this until sometime in 2022?
Well, Kurt, great question. We, we've received the money. The money is sitting in our bank account. The what, what we're talking about and the reason we haven't, at this point of time, the way the PPP loan, PPP was structured, it was structured as a loan. So on our current balance sheet, we have cash sitting in the bank. We also have a loan to the government for $398,000 or 398,000, which was the amount that we received. When we go through the formal process of having that loan reviewed, there is a high likelihood that it will be forgiven. The government will say, nope, you met all the qualifications. You do not need to pay that money back. It's at that point that we would then consider that money as income. We don't know the exact timing. It technically could happen this fiscal year. We don't know if it will or not. But that's why we kind of planned for it in, in the following fiscal year.
Okay, thank you. And the other, by the way, I would agree with what Tom said. Very good explanation of where we were in 2021, 2021, and also where you're going with the future. And the only other thing I would say is I applaud you for putting those funds in capital reserve because they need to be there for the future.
Sure.
It is great that we've earmarked those funds for the things that are going to need to come up and be as this time goes on from a, from a mechanical hardware standpoint, let's call it.
Absolutely, absolutely. Thanks, Kurt.
Thank you.
Ryan, Ken Miller, I've got a question.
Yeah.
First, I want to thank you and Tom and others for your hard work. It's refreshing to have the staff on board as we get back to being in person.
Sure.
Just the two questions on the budget for 21, 22. I see significant increase in missions and students. I'm assuming that's where some of the money from the PPE went to. Or could you explain what those significant increases are for?
Sure. Well, first of all, on the missions side, Ken, our missions, you'll notice is, is kind of a wash. We have very little net expense in our missions budget. Because again, the way we run our missions, anybody who attends or participates in one of our mission trips, they pay their portion of the cost. And so you'll see that revenue line of 66,000 and the expense line of 66,200. We, we always have a little bit of expenses that aren't paid by our participants and missions. So even if that number goes up and the reason it's going up, it's, it's going up because it's being, it's going to be closer to normal. Obviously, our missions expenses and our missions revenues last year were extremely low because we didn't have mission trips because of the COVID situation. So naturally, that number is going to be higher just because of the fact that we didn't do any missions last year. Unfortunately, we would have loved to have, but it just wasn't a realistic scenario. And now we're expecting to be able to in the next year, begin that again. On the student side, Tom, do you have, can you provide some clarity there for us?
Yeah, sure. Students is basically the, the same scenario, Ken. If you'll notice, the net line remains relatively unchanged from year to year. In fact, if you look at the net for that, for the student ministry, what they're projecting next year, it's almost, you know, only a couple hundred dollars different from what the budget that they submitted last year. The difference between the revenue and the expenses is like missions, student ministry does a couple of trips as well. They usually do a war camp missions trip in the summer for high school students and then the middle school students do a week of hope. And so the, you see the jump in the revenue and the expenses. It's reflecting their plans to have those trips in the next fiscal year. So and those trips are largely paid for by the students themselves. So the high revenue is the money coming in for those students paying for their trips. And then the high expenses is the cost of those trips. So both missions and students, you know, you see the significant jump. That's a reflection of of everybody's plans to, in the next fiscal year, be a lot closer back to normal again, starting up trips again that we didn't get to do for a year. So it's really a good thing.
Can I, can I offer up a comment related to that that might help Ken Miller a little bit? There's always some, I don't want to say confusion, but there's some maybe clarity that's needed in terms of definition of the word missions under ministries and what it means versus the definition of benevolence and what it means. And in the past, with the missions line that's under ministries, that's predominantly been a pass-through account where dollars have been received in for, from individuals who are going on mission trips. And we had many. We were going to Honduras and Guatemala and Africa and Pine Ridge and all those, all those mission trips. And those dollars pass through the church, through that mission line item. But then they get paid back out again as people go on the trips. So the mission line item there under ministry isn't So the mission line item there under ministry isn't the dollars that we are donating as a church to various organizations and missions. Those dollars are located under benevolence. And, and so sometimes it's, it's, it's hard to, when you're just glancing at it, if you don't exactly know how the dollars are flowing in and out, it can lead to some consternation when those numbers go up and down. Like they have over the past year when we had to shut everything down and, and couldn't travel internationally or, or even nationally. I just wanted to toss that, that out there. I thought it might be helpful.
Thank you.
I do have a question in terms of the reserve. I know that you took the additional dollars out of the reserve during the refinance. I'm assuming that was probably to pay points and buy down the interest rate. But what, where is, what does our reserve stand at currently? What do we really have in our capital reserve?
Tom, I don't have our balance sheet in front of us. Do you have it readily accessible?
Uh, I do not, but if you want to take the next question, I can.
Come back to that.
It's just that my headspace is exactly where Kurt's is because I remember having to pay for air handlers. And how painful, how painful that was.
We, yeah, there's enough money to buy quite a few HVAC units and even replace.
Glad to hear it.
You might be talking two different things though here. There's capital reserve. But I think you're also talking here when you took the transfer of one hundred thirty one thousand from reserves. Isn't that, there, isn't there really like two reserve accounts? One is capital and one is, I'll call it operating reserve.
Yeah, that's right, Kurt. Your, your, your precision is correct. We, we do have one, I, I think of them as piggy banks. We have one biggie bank that is, has a label on it that says capital reserves. And that is money that we have intentionally set aside for an HVAC unit that would go down or a leaky roof or the, some of those big repairs that you can't just handle out of your routine operating expenses. So we do have capital reserve. And then we have other reserve accounts as well. Some are very designated and have very specific purposes. Some are more general as well. And, and I would say we probably pulled from the more general to pay down the debt.
Thank you.
Our, our, our current, as of end, month end, last month, our current cash balance is just fractionally under one point six million dollars. I, I don't have the exact breakdown, Kurt, of the difference between our, our capital and our, our other reserve. But I guess I would say compared to where we have been, and I know there's some people on this call that have been former council members and navigated us through some much, much leaner times and years. The fact that we have a one point six million dollar cushion at the moment is, you know, significant difference from where we've been in years past. And, and our goal, like I said, with, with this PPP money is to put two thirty seven of that into reserves next year, once it gets defined as income. So again, that'll push us over the one point eight million threshold. April, you look like you're about to jump in.
Um, to answer the question, I forget if it was Kurt or Kathy, in the capital reserve fund, we actually have a very good balance. It's two eighty, two hundred and eighty six thousand.
April to the rescue.
Any other questions?
I have one other question, and it's in regard to the salary and benefits line item.
Yep.
And I just want to talk about the percentage for a bit from the standpoint of looking at the budget, I know that the dollars from PPE, PPP will go towards that. Yeah, let's get our Ps correct. But sixty seven is a pretty high percentage. And I know that we've the requirement I thought for the PPP was that we maintain staffing through October thirty first. And after that time period, basically all bets were off, depending on, you know, how you were operating and what you needed to operate. So I guess my, my question is, I'm trying to understand that sixty one percent to the sixty seven percent. Because I'm guessing that people may ask at the meeting on Sunday, it was, oh, are you going on a hiring spree? And I know that's really not what your intent is, but I think you need to come up with, and I'd love to hear the explanation too, is why is the percentage that much higher?
Sure. Great question. I will say, having been on council for now six years, that is a conversation we have every single budget year. We want to make sure we maintain a healthy balance of ministry and, and staffing. The, the, the one thing I will say that can change that number dramatically is our giving. Like I said, um, you know, that's our focus is really driving giving so that it keeps that that percentage in, in check. And the reality is, we've, we've managed through a really challenging year of, you know, like I said, giving, taking a twenty percent hit in the, the, the second quarter of the fiscal year because of a very unusual pandemic, one that obviously none of us have experienced anything like in our lifetimes. So had we not experienced that, we think our giving would have been quite a bit stronger. And obviously that makes that percentage a lot lower. At the same time, we are a ministry. We want to continue to drive ministry and, and, and we've looked very carefully at what we need for ministry. And it's always a challenge balancing, you know, needs and desires of, of what we need for ministry as well as the cost structure of that. So we've looked at it very, very carefully. We, we are aware that that number has ticked up in this current budget year. As I mentioned earlier, my hope is that our three point two million dollar projection is conservative. And, and, you know, if we continue to see kind of the upswing that we have seen in giving, I do think that that's a realistic scenario and, and that brings that purchase percentage down. That's why we were comfortable at least using a small percentage of that PPP money to cover that expense. Because that's, that was the government's intent in the first place was to use it for staffing, which is exactly what we are doing. We are maintaining our current staffing levels and are, are able to do so because of that money from the government. Uh, and again, we aren't using it all. So we, as, as we already mentioned, are putting, you know, over half of it, two thirds of it into reserves. So we are benefiting our balance sheet and keeping us in a a, a comfortable level. Our hope and expectation is we are going to continue to drive the revenue line through the, the messaging and the the generosity of our congregation. And, you know, our, our hope and expectation is to keep that number in check because of that increase in giving overtime. Tom, I know you had some perspective from, you know, our, our consultants that we use in terms of giving and, and comparing where we stand compared to other churches. So if you want to provide some color on that, Tom.
Yeah, sure. So what Ryan's referring to is we have a relationship with Generous generosity consultants. And, and specifically, we work closely with a woman named Sherry Adams. And when we were preparing last year's budget, which, you know, look at that number, it was last year, we were predicting salaries and benefits. Were going to be about sixty three percent. At that time, I asked Sherry, I said, what's, what's kind of the rule of thumb? And she said, well, you really can group churches into two categories, two cultural categories. One is churches that have a culture of being volun- very heavy volunteer based, volunteer driven. The other segment would be churches that are very staff driven. And she said, you have, Good Shepherd happens to be in the second category. There's nothing wrong with that. And for cat, for churches that are in that category, we kind of, we tend to, we being Generous tend to see them fall in the sixty to sixty five percent range as salaries and benefits as a percent of the whole. Now, I was comforted to hear that because I had always been working under a, a lower number, a lower target number, but and so I was comforted to hear Sherry say that. Now, you can look at what we're projecting for next year and it's even above that high watermark of sixty five percent, no doubt about it. My philosophy is kind of what Ryan shared, I view it as this year or this coming year, we're investing in ourselves. And I really expect that investment of us investing in our staff to pay dividends over the next year to drive that top line even higher, which will bring that percent of the whole down. And I'll say one more thing. If you were to look at a, a year over year comparison, going back probably as many years as I've been involved in leadership of the church. If you were to look at year over year budget compared to actuals, I would almost bet that every single year, we fairly significantly underspend on salaries and benefits from what we budgeted to what the actuals are. And the reason for that is over the course of the year, you would be amazed at how much turnover we have. And so we'll go months where we're recruiting for a new position. And while we're recruiting, or not a new position, but to fill a position. And while we're doing that, there, a couple of months will go by where we're not paying that salaries and benefits. And it just ends up resulting in at the end of the year, underspending. I, I would bet that is going to happen at the end of, by the time we're talking on May, on April twenty ninth of twenty twenty two, I, I would be willing to bet that that's what is going to happen in the year ahead. The reason you see such a significant jump from the forecast where we're going to end on June thirtieth to where we say we're going to end next year, or what we're projecting for next year is this year with the pandemic, we've had, I, I don't want to say a hiring freeze, but we have really done our best across the staff to address openings with available capacity that we have amongst our remaining staff. So there's been a number of people in positions, people who have been sort of repurposed because maybe they didn't have the full number of hours, there wasn't that demand for their role in what they were hired to do. But rather than let them go and rather than hire somebody to fill a vacancy, we were able to shift people who had similar skill sets to be able to fill needs in other ministries. What you see reflected in the budget for next year is starting to fill some of those positions that for a year have been, have been empty. We may fill them, we may not. It'll depend on the need. So my point is, we're not going to be at a full burn on July first. Even if we get to a full burn by the end of the year, it's going to take the year for that demand to rise up, for us to recruit, for us to hire people and to get to that full burn. So I'm very confident we'll underspend it because they're pretty conservative salaries and benefits, conservative in terms of may, maybe overestimating what we're going to need. Does that make sense?
Kathy, Kathy, one other point I'll, I'll point out, if you compare what we're proposing for this year's budget of two point one three three, look at what we spent two years ago, not this current year, but the year prior, we're at two one seven three. So we spent, we're forty thousand dollars less than we were two years ago in terms of salaries and benefits. That is also you know, you have to understand, has anybody's healthcare expenses gone up over the last couple of years? Ours have. So even with rising healthcare costs and, and our rising costs for insurance, our, our salaries and bed, uh, and, and benefits bu- budget is still below what it was two years ago. We are working very hard at managing that carefully. And that, that is every staff position that opens, every request from a director for new staffing, we are looking at extremely carefully to make sure that we're managing that as effectively as we can.
Well, I'm, I'm glad to hear Tom talk about repurposing staff because there's a hidden cost to turnover that doesn't, doesn't show up on the, the budget line item in terms of training and decreased productivity and that type of thing. So if you have staff that you're able to repurpose, who already understand how to fill out their time sheet and turn it in on time to April and, and, you know, go through whatever policies and procedures we have and you don't have to retrain them. It, it results in a, a hidden cost savings and a cost avoidance.
Yeah, and just people who we know are good, hard workers and fit into our culture and are bought into our vision and all that, you know, it's, you can't always replace that either. So, yeah, thanks for recognizing that.
Any other questions? I think we covered it, Tom. I think we nailed it.
I think you did. I think you did a great job.
I think these two gentlemen deserve a round of applause. Awesome work, Tom and, and Ryan.
Well, thank you.
Thank you, Mark.
Appreciate that.
So again, thank you for your interest. Thank you for your time, everybody. We appreciate the fact that you are committed to our church enough to come, spend an evening with us to get a better understanding of, of where we stand and, and what we are proposing for next year. So we thank you for that. Look forward to seeing you all at the annual meeting. And again, just thank you for, for your commitment and your time.
Yeah, I, I echo that. And I think most of you are pretty regulars at these town halls and at the annual meetings. So you know, we, we will not go into this level of detail in the budget at the annual meeting. Certainly you can ask a question. We'll have an opening for Q and A at the annual meeting, but you don't have to wait for the annual meeting. If you've got questions, my, my door is always open. I'll, I'll always respond to texts and phone calls. So don't hesitate to reach out if you have any questions or just want to talk through things. Always happy to do that.
Hey, Tom, you mentioned that we're working with Generous. Is that a hint that we're headed towards a, I can't call it a capital campaign. Can I call it a new generosity initiative?
I don't know. I, I don't know. We, I mean, we don't have anything planned by any means. Mark, maybe you want to talk for a minute about our engagement with Oxano. You know, we are, we are working on a new, a new strategic vision. That'll be many months away. And depending on what comes out of that, there might be a need for, uh, like a traditional capital campaign or stewardship initiative, but that's to be seen. So.
And, and Kathy, our relationship with them, with Generous has continued for a lot of years. This is not like we just started this up again. This has been kind of an ongoing dialogue we've had for a number of years now.
Yeah. You know, really with what we're trying to do now is what our goal was five, six years ago when we had our beyond initiative, which was beyond was never about raising money or increasing giving. It was really about trying to instill a spirit of generosity in our congregation. And we're really working hard on that. Again, Sherry has kind of coined the phrase a stewardship and, or generosity and stewardship ministry. And that's really what we're trying to start up. And you see that reflected in things like the steady generosity moments that you see during worship now. Quarterly newsletters, we just put one in the mail today. So look for that in the next couple of days in your mailbox. And we have some other things planned throughout the year that they're not an initiative, they're just what we should have, what we should always be doing, which is trying to instill a spirit of generosity and good stewardship in, in all of our congregants.
Yeah, the team has done a great job with those generosity pieces, moments, those, those films that we are showing in the services. And it's been a good chance to get to know several people in the congregation and see some specifics about how giving is impacting ministry and, and changing lives. So I think that really does have, have a big, big impact. In terms of, I, I'll be sharing a little bit more at the annual meeting about our process with Oxano, do an overview of that. But it's a nine month engagement. And so we've just started, just had the one meeting. And it's very systematic in how we've been looking at our, our vision, our values, mission metrics, our strategy going forward, and then really more down, down the road to look at implementation of that and how we can continue to, to move the ball forward. So it's a very healthy, exciting process that we're in, and I look forward to seeing what the specifics will be. But yeah, that, there's. Uh, but yeah, that there's nothing, there's nothing um included in that process specifically that that is a generosity campaign per se. They they certainly do that kind of work also. That's not specifically included in this. This is more looking at our overall uh strategy and vision going forward. So that that's that hasn't been planned for, but it's not impossible that, you know, we'll, there'll there'll be changes that will require something like that. Um, but that remains to be seen. And I I don't, I I'm not, at this point, I would say that's that's not planned for.
Well, why don't I uh close? Mark, you opened us in prayer. Let me uh close this in prayer. And and again, just thank you for for everybody's interest and their commitment um to Good Shepherd. Um, we 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 need more of that and we appreciate it. So dear Lord, we thank you for this evening. We thank you for bringing us together, giving us the opportunity. Um, we thank you for your generosity with Good Shepherd, the blessings that you have provided to us. Um, we thank you for um council and and our our um ability to um do everything in our power to be good stewards of the resources you have provided for us. Um, we we pray um continued blessings um that that your blessings will continue to pour out upon us as they have for oh so many years. Um, we pray for the annual meeting and and that process. Um, may there be strong attendance and and um and and a strong engagement from our our church community. Um, and um we just ask your continued guidance as we continue to uh focus on being good stewards and and managing the resources we have. Uh, we pray that all this in Jesus's name. Amen.
Amen. Thanks so much, guys. Really appreciate all the hard work.
Thank you all, everybody, and good night.
You got it. Have a great night, everybody.